The first order of business is to take a look at our agenda for this evening. And, um, once we do that, I would entertain a motion to approve that agenda. Any more discussion additions? Just for, Nelson's not going to report his monthly log. He did that two weeks ago and.
I'll do this month and the last month at the next meeting.
So he's doing a couple of months for us.
I'm doing two months at a time.
So if we could just reflect that in a minute, so I think you can leave it on the agenda. We have a second. Any more discussion? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Why don't we, so our guest isn't driving back at midnight when we get out of here.
I've done that before.
Why don't we ask John Springer of Portsmouth, New Hampshire Attorney at Law, speak to us about this proposed, uh, I'm sorry again, cell tower?
Cell tower replacement, yeah.
Yeah, cell tower replacement. So I will yield the floor to you, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, again, my name is John Springer. I'm with Springer Law in Portsmouth. I'm not a Vermont attorney, but I'm affiliated with David Greig, who is a Vermont attorney. I do a lot of cell tower work for a lot of different companies in Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont, which is why I'm here. You should have received, hopefully the board and the select board should have received a couple of thick packets from me, but I also have.
No, I haven't received any.
You didn't receive the packet yet?
Well, the select board may have.
Well.
Not that we're, not that I'm.
You really?
Both these guys are on the select board, by the way.
Well, everybody was.
We're not certified by the U.S. Postal Service.
No, we're not.
Did you mail it that way?
I'm.
Never get here.
See, I don't, I mailed it.
It's Pony Express here.
Uh, but that's okay because we can, I have copies of the vital parts of the packet. So if you take one, I'm going to hand that out first and then I'm going to keep this, keep this, and then I'm going to hand out the site plans. And then I will explain what's the process and what's going on.
Okay.
There should be enough copies for everybody, hopefully. If not, I may be able to dig out a few more.
Do you have one?
No, just keep passing around.
Yeah.
I'm John Springer, by the way.
Hi. Hi. Here's one more here.
Yeah, there's probably some actually.
Okay, everybody got one?
Yep.
Okay, John.
Okay. Well, if, since you didn't get the packet, then you haven't seen the letter. Let me give you a brief overview of what's, what the packet has and why I sent out the packet, et cetera, and then we can walk through the letter and the project. This is the first step where the packet that I sent out on June 15th is the first step in the required process to try to replace the existing tower at 320 Tower Road in Pownell. And the packet that hopefully is going to arrive, should have arrived because it went out on June 15th, is what's called a 45-day advance notice. And under state law, under Vermont state law, which is section, statute is 248A, Title 30, Chapter 5, Section 248A, the state has set out this procedure for everyone to follow if they're looking to either build a new tower or replace an existing tower or somehow upgrade or expand an existing tower. And in order to go through this process, the first step is you have to send out what's called the advanced 45-day notice. And are you on the board or are you in a butter?
I'm the state representative of Pownell.
Okay. So I was going to ask if you're in a butter, if you've got your packet. I'm very worried about that because if the packet somehow got screwed up.
It's only about this thick that never arrived.
And you are?
I'm John, I'm sorry, I'm John Springer. I'm the attorney for the applicant Blue Sky Towers. And I have an extra copy if you want to follow the bouncing ball.
Thank you very much.
Sure. So the first step, if you want to replace the tower such as we do, is to send out the 45-day advance notice. And the 45-day advance notice has a number of items. It has this letter that I just handed out. It's got site plans, which I also handed out. It's got the, what we call radio frequency plots, which I'm going to hand out in a few minutes. It's got a full set, the reason the packet is so thick is because it's got a full set of what we call the NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act, which is about two inches thick. And I sent out the entire report to everybody. I only brought the summary here tonight, which I'm going to hand out in a minute. And the packets went out to all the abutters. It went out, hopefully you will get one here at the board, you will get one at the select board. If you look on the last page of the letter, there's a whole list of people that we have to send it to, or state agencies, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully every, I'm going to, it bothers me because it should have been here. If it's not, we've got to restart the 45 days over, but that's really not your problem. And Mr. Chair, you know, I might, I might suggest if I give you five minutes to read through the letter, it might not be a bad idea because that would make a lot of what we go through.
That would be fine. Why don't, why don't we take five?
I think that makes a lot of sense, quite frankly.
Are we sure this is the location of the tower? It has a different.
On Paul Coines property?
Has a different assessor's map and lot number.
Well, we just did that one just so that it could, well, no, the, this part you don't read. Nelson just wanted to.
I don't need that.
Well, no.
Well, it shouldn't be there.
Well, that, we were trying to just get a map of where Tower Road was in case some people didn't know where Tower Road was.
Which is the lot.
Right.
Oh, that I honestly don't know. I have to ask Mr. Springer. But that is just a map of.
Tower Road.
Right.
Is this Paul Coines lot here?
Yep.
Okay. And so you're going to be like right, almost in the middle of it?
Yep.
So this is Coines lot here, so you can follow it on Tower Road.
This is that long skinny line.
Yeah, and that gravel road that he's talking about going here. The area 45 by 45 is almost in the middle of it.
And I will say, the site plans that I handed out also have very detailed drawings of the site and the layout.
Okay.
So you'll see that in more detail.
Oh, yeah. So we do have an idea. Just so we know where it lives.
And I believe it's a private road because it's not on the.
It is.
Road map.
Yeah.
It's past Rosen Road. If you were to look at here, where, I don't know if you know what Carpenter Hill and Rosen Road is, but that's what it is. It's just beyond that.
Yep.
I've hiked there because I live on Rosen Road.
Here you go. John, does it say in here how tall the current tower is?
Yep, 98 feet.
So the difference is only the 42 feet?
Approximately, right. Oh, yeah, there it is.
Just have to be lighted, John.
Nope.
Really?
Really.
How tall does one have to be to be lighted?
Proximity to the airport, more than anything.
More than anything.
Right. It's, the general rule is if it's under 200 feet, it doesn't need lights, but.
But if you're closer to an airport.
If you're closer to an airport, it gets sticky, so.
The tower's down on Bosque.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's some near the airport.
Yeah.
They're only 25 feet high, but they have to be lighted.
Yeah, that says here. We need more time or can we?
Take it down.
Can we let John?
And it's going in the same spot.
Pretty much the same spot.
He's on the general command.
Yeah, minor modification.
Minor change in the.
It's a monopole versus guide wires and all that stuff.
Yeah, take away the guide.
Ron was on the zoning board of the district right then.
The present one does not have fencing around it, but this will have to.
It does not. It will. Yep.
Because of the additional height?
Just because it's better security. We didn't build, the current applicant, Blue Sky, did not build that. They bought that tower. So when whoever built it, AT&amp;T or whoever, didn't put up any security fence.
Originally, it was built either by Morris Block or one of the, Daley's, one of those two.
Only Daley put that up. Communicate with your trucks.
That's what it was originally.
Communication tower, that's what that was.
It's before cell towers.
That was back in the old days.
Is that the tallest point on Carpenter Hill Road?
Didn't realize what the future value of those towers were.
But, I mean, I drove up there tonight.
Right.
I, I don't think it's at the crest. I could be wrong.
I think the house is.
Well, we'll need you to go back and hike that and report.
I'd love to do that. It is a beautiful spot.
Or send Shannon up.
Send Shannon up and she can report.
All right, why don't we, why don't we get back on, on track here?
Well, just to finish with the procedure issue, the plan is after we get done tonight, we have to wait 45 days. We have to give everybody the notice. And at that point, we can file an application for a certificate of public good with the Vermont Public Service Board. And at that time, the town will have an opportunity, if it wants to participate in that proceeding or not, and other interested parties can participate in that proceeding or not. Without getting too much into the nitty-gritty of the legalities and the statute, this is what's called a project of limited size and scope. It's, it's a defined type of project, which is between, the lowest is the de minimis replacement or de minimis project, which is under 300 square feet, you're not increasing the height. The next one up above us, or higher on the scale, so to speak, is if you are over 10,000 square feet of disturbance and you're going over 200 feet and it's a new tower. We are, between those two, we're called a limited size and scope project because while we are increasing the height, we are still below 200 feet and we are not increasing, we're not doing ground disturbance more than 10,000 square feet. So we're going to be able to apply as a limited size and scope project, but we still have to file the application. And if you think that the packet you're hopefully going to get in the mail tomorrow is thick, wait till you see the actual application. You'll get a copy of the actual application and, at that time. And then we go through that process. It's a, you know, the PSB has in, has the statutory criteria they apply, whether there's impacts on environmental issues, historic issues, things like that. And if anybody shows up to object to the tower, they have an actual hearing. I've been through those before at the PSB. But if no one objects and the, and the PSB finds that we've met all, meet all the criteria, they will give us the certificate of public good. So that's the process. Now, in terms of the project itself, the, I think the best way to start or the best way to look at is if you take the site plans.
Mm-hmm.
And sheet C1.
Did they, did you have enough of those to pass?
Yeah, that's what I don't, that's what I don't have one of those. Didn't everybody get them all?
We didn't have the site plan. We didn't get site plans, Tom.
No.
All we got is this guy right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we got one, two, three.
Four of them were passed out.
All right. Well, I'll tell you why. We may have to share. I thought I did.
Yeah, that's right. We can share on this site.
You guys have one?
We can share.
Yeah.
Mr. C1. Okay. You know, I'm sorry.
Share one down here.
Yeah. If you've got another one for those guys.
Here, Bill said you can take his for now.
Who are you going to look on with? Sid?
And I, you know.
You have an idea?
I, I do. I have one more.
Okay, great.
Because then I, I have to use mine.
Right. I ain't paying attention.
Does Bill have a copy down here?
No, he shared.
No, it's okay. I looked at it all.
What I would like to see is the propagation map.
We'll get there. We'll get there. The, I'm going to, if you go to sheet C1, that's a good, in the right-hand, lower right-hand corner. That's the existing conditions.
While anybody get their, keep going.
No? It's before the A's.
Oh.
It's not alphabetical, sorry.
It was handed to me.
Sorry.
By me.
C1 is before the A's. That's basically a good bird's eye view, sort of shows you what was on that tax map or the assessors map you looked at. In the, it's my understanding that Tower Road is indeed a private road. And on the, on the left-hand side of that sheet shows you more of a close-in view of what's there. There is the 98-foot guide tower. And I have to tell you, I, I went out and looked at it tonight and the fact that it's a 98-foot guide tower should tell you something because usually, I mean nowadays, 90-foot tower would be done as a self-supporting tower, a single shaft without the guide wire. So this tells me that they did it pretty old and that there's not much of a foundation in there. And it basically is, they're a real problem structurally, which is what's driving this issue. But that gives you a good view of the existing conditions. And then if you go to sheet A1, this shows you again, sort of a bird's eye view of what we're proposing to do. And the, if you look on the left-hand side again, you'll see there was a question about whether we're moving it or whether we're staying the same footprint. We're staying the same general footprint. The equipment shelter for AT&amp;T is not moving. If you look on, right here where it says existing tower and follow the line, that's where the existing tower is. And then we're proposing to move the new tower up northerly, probably by, you know, 25 or 30 feet. And usually, the, the reason they don't put it in the exact spot is because they plan, AT&amp;T is currently on the tower, as is the Bennington Rescue Squad. And if we took the tower down and then replaced it in the exact same spot, they wouldn't be able to propagate. And so whenever you do a replace, I shouldn't say whenever, but most of the times when you do a replacement like this, you, you move the footprint a little so that they can be building the new tower while the old tower's still being used, which certainly on a site like this makes a lot of sense in our opinion. But then if you go to sheet A2, it gives you a closer in, closer view of the proposed compound. And that actually gives you a better, easier way to read where the existing tower is. The existing tower is between those two shelters.
Yeah.
One is for the Bennington Rescue Squad and then the other, the bigger one is for AT&amp;T. And the compound is going to be to the left. There will be some grading and filling there because of the slope of land, not a lot. That triangular.
It's the foundation.
Well, that's the tower itself.
You're looking down on it?
The, the tower, that, that's looking down straight on the tower?
The existing.
No.
Well, we're looking down on both the existing and the proposed. This is the existing tower right here.
That little guy in the middle of the buildings.
And then this is the proposed tower that you're looking straight down on. Okay? And.
They are not in scale, are they?
These are in, well, these are in scale, but not at eight and a half and 11. If you look at, it's roughly in scale. If you look at down here, there's a scale for a two by three.
Right.
And there's a scale by 11 by 17. When you photocopy it to this, which is eight and a half by 11, you lose that scale, so to speak. So you can't, it's, it's not exact, but it's pretty.
Because the new one looks much larger than the old one.
It is. But the new one is only 12 feet aside.
And it's a standalone. There's no guide wires.
Right, right, right. The, yeah, and that's why I said the first, the existing one is really, really, I would almost, and, and I'm, see this stuff all the time, I do this stuff all the time, that's why I do these hearings. That existing tower, I would say, is a rickety tower. I mean, it really is small. And what we're proposing is really what is being done today in terms of towers.
More substantial.
Well, let me, one of the things we do is we look at the footprint.
Yep.
If you were to look at where your guide wires are from that tower is there today, how much larger is that footprint with all the guide wires of the existing tower?
In fact, the guide wires, one of them goes off the property.
I bet you does too.
I think, well, I think it goes outside that one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And there should be.
At 98 feet, it's got to be.
If you look at the, if you go back to sheet C1, you can see on the, on the details.
Yep.
Yeah, you see the guide wires coming out. It's right there.
Yeah.
They're way out.
They're way out.
All the way across.
And those, those will be removed.
And the old tower will be removed.
And the old tower will be removed. And then actually, A3, sheet A3, shows a good profile of what we are proposing to do in terms of the tower.
Right.
It is a single shaft, self-supporting tower. It's a monopole. And it has the, the top of the tower, at the top, you will see, the top of the tower is 140 feet and we are having a six-foot lightning rod. The, where it says the AT&amp;T panel antennas, those are the antenna arrays at the top of the tower.
And that's what's shown here, right?
That's, that's what's shown there.
Yeah.
Yep.
The center of this is the monopole with.
Exactly right. Exactly right. And the diameter of the monopole is, I, I just did this, it's probably going to be between, at the diameter at the base is going to be probably in the range of five to six feet. And then it, it tapers at the top to about two to three feet. It depends on the manufacturer, but that's, that's the general ballpark.
Can I ask one question? We keep talking about AT&amp;T. Are you going to have more than the one carrier on this at some point?
Yep. Hope so. Because that's a good segue into the next point because if you look at sheet A3, below those AT&amp;T panel antennas, you will see three references to panel antennas by others. Those are what we call colocation slots. That's a fancy league, a fancy industry term for subleasing space on the tower. I don't know why they call it colocation, but they do. And the way, right now, that existing tower is incapable of supporting AT&amp;T's equipment upgrades, which is why AT&amp;T needs a new tower. It is totally and utterly incapable of supporting any other carriers. I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how many carriers are licensed in this part of the state, but my guess is there's probably five or six. My guess is probably Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, US Cell, Sprint. And sometimes they have a smaller regional carrier, but that's, those are basically the ones that would be interested in this type of site. They would all, you need 10 feet of separation between center line and center line of antennas. So the center line of the AT&amp;T antennas would be at 136, then the next one would be at 126, the next one at 116, and the next one at 106. The Bennington Rescue Squad, as you can see.
80.
Is at about 80 feet.
Yeah.
I'm told that the, there was a, I don't know, I guess it's the Bennington Fire Department has interest in the site, but it's, it's a matter of budget, I guess, so I don't know what their plans, how, how those plans will play out. But the, the way this works, just very briefly, is the, each carrier installs its antennas on the tower. And higher is better. This is a, a line-of-sight technology.
Mm-hmm.
It's not literally a line-of-sight because you can sit here in this office with your handheld device.
Behind a mountain.
And you can pull coverage even though you can't literally see it. But it's a line-of-sight in the sense of physics. And the radio frequency waves from the antenna have to be able to talk to your handset and your handset has to be able to talk to your, talk to the antennas. And these are, it's a great technology, it's extremely popular, but the radio frequency waves can be blocked by topography, hills and mountains. Trees can block it, buildings can block it, things like that. For some reason, in a 1900 megahertz band, which is where AT&amp;T, I believe, is propagating here, the, the distance of the sine wave of the radio frequency wave is so, is such that a pine needle, pine needles block these very efficiently because of the length, somehow the length of the pine needle corresponds with the length of the sine wave and also the water content of the pine needle. So pine trees block it more than other trees. But each site, in a best-case scenario, if you had no, if you were propagating over water, you could probably go five, six, seven miles in any one direction. That's with no topography problems, no trees, buildings, rain. In northern New England, I always say the general rule of thumb is two to three miles in any one direction. And you'll see, we'll see the RF plots in a minute. But that's why, as you drive down the highway, you will see a tower every few miles. And the way this works is your handset is talking to the tower, talking to the antennas.
Switches to the next.
And then as you go through the RF footprint for each site, you get handed off from tower to tower. Your voice or signal goes up to the antennas, it goes down a cable, across into the equipment cabinet, and then it gets tied into a landline, which then routes your call wherever you're talking over the world. And then as you move out of that footprint for that site, you get handed off from site to site to site. That's, and, and when I say handset, I used to say, I've been doing this a long time. I used to say phone. I no longer say phone because this can do wireless internet, it can transmit data, pictures, all sorts of cool things. You, you know, you can use your iPods and computers and things like wireless connections, things like that. So I, now I say handset rather than, rather than phones.
Does the height change the frequency or just the reception of the frequency?
The height does not change the frequency. It changes the ability to propagate it. The, the frequency is each carrier purchased the right to use a specific part of the radio frequency band from the federal government back in 1996. They had an auction and they auctioned off the 1900 megahertz band. Some of these carriers also have lower frequency bands they can propagate in. I know Verizon isn't, can do it sometimes in 700 or 800 megahertz range. Some of the other carriers can as well. The Rescue Squad undoubtedly propagates probably in the 600 to 700 megahertz. It's a much lower frequency because that has a much bigger footprint than, than what AT&amp;T would have here. It's just, it's the physics of it. But the, the reason AT&amp;T needs this is because the, the existing tower is structurally incapable of supporting their equipment update. If you go out there and look up at the top, you will see they have a couple of antennas up there, but they don't have what's called a full array. The full array would be two or three panel antennas on each face of the triangle, so to speak. If you saw on sheet A3 where it says the Bennington Rescue Squad antenna, and then it's just got like that one little line sort of going straight up.
Yeah.
That's what's called a whip antenna. It, it is, it's an omnidirectional antenna. It propagates just like if you throw a pebble in a pond, ripples in a pond. The panel antennas are directional antennas. And so they will only propagate in the direction you send them. And so. And so, um, and the panel antennas, um, I don't, you have bigger fluorescent lights, but a panel antenna, I always tell people, are basically like, uh, just a big fluorescent light. I mean, it can be, uh, four or five feet high, uh, several inches deep and, you know, a foot wide, so to speak. Um, but, um, those are directional antennas, which is why they have the three face, uh, of the array. And each face of the array covers a hundred and twenty degrees of the compass. And so those antennas are propagating, um, out. Uh, this is a, another limiting factor for the, uh, antennas is the power, the, the power of the handset. Um, it's not, it's a very low power outage because you don't want somebody putting a huge power pack next to their head when they're talking on a phone. It's really sort of equivalent to a baby monitor, the, the phone, in terms of what it has. And that's a real limiting factor as well in terms of, of, of how well these sites or, or how much ground, if you will, these sites will cover.
Mr. Spring, excuse me, let me ask our zoning administrator a question. We consider that our jurisdiction, and clearly our zoning bylaw purports to regulate these and make them a conditional use, but we consider that the Public Service Board has divested us of any jurisdiction to act on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But given that they changed the law-
If that's so, other than giving us the forty-five days notice for which we thank you.
Oh, we can, we can-
Well, there is more.
No, there's more because we have party status now to this hearing.
We have party status, you can write a letter.
So that's why-
To the Public Service Board.
Yeah. You're not, the board is divested of its ability to act on an application. But it's not divested of its ability to either agree with or object to a particular location or how the location is being addressed. Is a good nutshell way to put it.
Yes, the board would write a letter to the Public Service Board stating those reasons.
Yeah, no, we've done that before.
In, in favor of or against?
In terms of the compound itself, uh, you know, there's, there's existing access up there. Um, the only utilities we need are power and electric. Uh, the tower will not be lit. Um, the only traffic after construction is one or two trips per month per carrier. Uh, so if you get, uh, three carriers, this is proposed as a four-carrier pole. So if you get four carriers up there, you're talking maybe four to eight trips a month by a technician in a, in a, you know, passenger vehicle going up to make sure that the equipment is, is working well. Uh, there's no sewer, there's no water.
Is there gonna be a backup generator?
Uh, I don't believe so. It should be shown on the plans.
I just know some sites have it. I didn't know if this one did or not.
If it's not on the sheet A2, I would say it's not proposed for the site.
What would they have, just some UPS?
They, well, um, they, there, there are a couple of options. If the power goes out and they can't fix it quickly, they could bring a portable generator up there. Um, sometimes they just wait for the power to come back on.
That's what it states. They may use a portable.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. It's in the letter. Yeah. Uh, and likewise, um, if, uh, this is probably not an issue on this side. We get this question a lot in, and I say this all to respect small towns. I'm from a small town, but, uh, a lot of times we're at the end of a private road or a long road. Uh, if it gets snowed in, um, my guess is they will probably maintain this because it's the Mr. Coin's residence up there, so it's gonna be plowed. Uh, but if, you know, a lot of times if it gets snowed in, uh, they'll either send somebody up there on foot or, or on a snowmobile. They, they rarely plow these sites. The, um, in this situation, AT&amp;T already has a shelter up there. They're gonna continue to use it. And again, if you look at A2, it shows the, that gray area is just a cable run, sort of like a tray where the cables are gonna come down from the pole, run over into the equipment shelter. So, um, that's, that's really, uh, about it, I guess, uh, on, on that. I can-
The, the D-mark for this is at the foot of the tower road. Is that where the, the, I know they put a box up there, the phone company or someone did, and I'm not sure if it was fiber or not, but I know there's a D-mark at the bottom of the tower.
Yeah, I don't, I'm-
I was just wondering if it was had fiber or not, had fiber up there.
I don't know. There's a junction box. It doesn't say.
You're asking, what do they have for backhaul?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have the backhaul up there?
That, well-
Backhaul is, the signal goes to the tower. If it has fiber, you're in good shape. If you don't have fiber, you're not as powerful. It's to the advantage of a, as the fiber of the towers.
But if they don't have fiber, they just use the regular line.
Then it's not as robust in terms of its ability.
That may be-
Can that be fixed in the future, though? Can that be upgraded in the future?
It could be. It'd be great if they did it now. Well, I, I guess, Bill, I, I agree with you. One of our state statements, when we send our comments to the Public Service Board, I don't know what runs up Carpenter Hill. I do know they put a new D-mark at the bottom of this a few years back.
It's a DLS box, a Fairpoint up at the top of the junction.
Yeah, because right, right, right down, yeah. So I'm, I'm saying, I don't know if they, at that time, ran fiber, that, that outfit, but it's a question that would be good to just make a comment on.
Who, who do we ask that of?
I would say when you write your Public Service Board letter, whether you're in support or not in support, one of the statements you can make is, you know, if you're in support of this, but you would like to have, at some point, see that fibers run there.
Or to find out if fiber optics are there now. So who would we ask that question?
Well, I could find out if it's there now. I don't know what their plans are in the future, but-
Would you?
They, yeah, I can do that. Um, and then if you, uh, I should have enough of all of these. If you could take one of these. These are the RF plots. Take one and pass one around. These were also included in the, uh-
Why, I didn't mean to give you one.
Take one and pass it around.
Why don't you give me the patch and I'll keep one. He doesn't get Verizon on here. I'm not voting for it.
Here you go. This is a different one.
This is different?
Yeah. I think so, right?
Aye, that's okay. We want Verizon, right?
Sure you do.
Verizon the letter. Yeah. There are two different plots. Take one and pass it along.
I got you.
There are two different ones.
Okay.
So you need them both.
What else have we got?
He's got it. He's, Jim has another packet.
Oh, you got one.
And I, I apologize for the quality of the first one or one of the ones. It's kind of blurry, but this is the way it was emailed to me and this is the best version I had.
One more.
This is a new one.
All right.
I'm making a name.
Mm-hmm. I recognize this. It's like one of the Sockeys.
There you go.
Yeah, these are going to shame though, that's all.
Let me see. Yeah. You should have a second one that shows this.
Probably in all of those.
No. He's got-
Oh, it's going around.
He's, he's, they're still coming around.
These look identical to me.
One is darker blue.
One has, yeah, one has a much bigger flake on it.
Yeah, different scale.
Yep. It looks like the-
There's two different color blues.
Yeah.
It's to the atomic font.
Dark blue.
There you go. Okay. These are, those are all three, those are all identical.
Rangeli Lake.
Okay. I don't know-
See, so I wasn't losing my mind.
You're not losing your mind, no.
I'm looking at it.
There's a whiter blue.
Okay, there you go. Now you've got a complete set.
And a bigger scale, larger scales.
And then-
So this is the other one?
Yes, this is the other one.
Okay.
You got it. That's what we got.
You got it. The darker blue.
Yeah. You've got a full set. You two have a full set. You've got a full set. You've got a full set. Okay, everybody's got a full set. Okay. Now.
Okay.
The first, uh, the first one, which is the unclear one.
Okay.
Uh, I apologize, but as I said, this is the best I, I had. This shows three sites. The one down here, the lowest one, which has VTL, excuse me, zero-zero-five-one-zero, that's the proposed site that we are here on tonight.
Okay.
The two to the north are existing on-air sites for, um, AT&amp;T. And the blue shows the coverage footprint. The radio frequency coverage footprint from all three sites, as if they were all turned on and propagating on air.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, not that this really means anything, but just, if you look at those pie-shaped wedges, you'll see they're not all pointing in the same direction from the three sites.
Yeah.
That's because, that gets back to my point about these are panel antennas that are directional antennas. And in fact, if you look at the top one, which is 508, you'll see they don't have a pie-shaped, sort of, back way.
It is southeast quadrant.
Right. That's because undoubtedly they are backdroped by a mountain or a hill. So they're not sending their radio waves that way. They're sending them where there is no hill. And this is a good idea of how challenging it is to cite these locations in northern New England. But, uh, the, um, that shows the existing coverage. If you look at the next one, which is a much better RF plot, and I'm gonna address this issue before we file anything with this PSB, trust me on that, but this is just the coverage from this site.
Okay.
Okay? This has those two northern sites turned off and it's just the coverage from this site. And the, if, there must be, if you look at 504, 504, which is just to the north, even when it's turned on, there's no coverage from that site to the south down here.
Right.
Which is a good example of how topography can break, can, can block these radio waves. But, uh, this is AT&amp;T's coverage, existing coverage and proposed coverage from the new site. And this, and I would say this is from the new site at, center line, 136 for the antennas. Okay? So that's the expected coverage from, um, this site at 136, 136-foot height.
Is 504, is that up on Mount Anthony?
I don't know. I don't, I don't have the look-
Would you guess, Nelson? That's probably the one on Mount Anthony. That's not the one on Charlie, what's his name's property across the Pownell, uh, Bennington line, right? It's got a-
Charlie.
No, his would be back, uh-
No.
It looks like, it looks like Mount Anthony.
Yeah, it's probably Mount Anthony. So this is Mount Anthony. Okay. And that could explain why it doesn't-
Yeah.
And this is, this is only, yeah, this is only coverage for AT&amp;T.
Yeah.
Other carriers will have other sites-
Sure.
To the north.
Okay.
Uh, and the site, you know, on the lower, lower portion of this pole, if it ever gets built, another carrier comes, uh, at 116, I think was the lowest one.
And this is with the new and improved tower?
That's with the new and improved tower. Yep.
How is it with the old one, much smaller or?
Uh, that I don't have.
Okay.
Uh, it's probably, I'll, I'll be honest with you. They're doing this not so much for coverage. They're doing this because they can't up, they, they can't upgrade the antennas.
Need to modernize it.
So my guess is they do get additional coverage, uh, but the problem is the existing tower is just structurally insufficient.
And the equipment for the Bennington Rescue Squad, that's all upgraded. That's all new. They don't take it off the old tower and put it on the new tower.
Oh, it's gonna go on the new tower.
The old stuff. This is all upgraded equipment on the new tower.
For AT&amp;T, yes. For Bennington Rescue Squad, I don't know what their plans are. They're gonna get switched over, but I don't know what their, their plans are.
Okay.
So, um, and then the next handout I have. Yeah, absolutely, Bill. Take one and pass it along.
What, um, level of services will it be? Right now, you're 3G up there.
Yeah.
Will this take you to 4G or potentially 5G?
I don't know about 5G. I believe it's to 4G, but I can confirm that. Yeah.
From the point of view of Pownell and broadband delivery, the most critical remaining area is Skippery and High Hollow Roads. I can't tell from your propagation map how much of it you'll pick up. There are parts, it looks from this map that your slope of Tubbs Road would be okay.
Yeah.
There's a significant population up there that has no access to either cable or DSL.
Okay.
Only wireless.
Where is that?
And from the town's point of view, that has been a, a critical problem. Now, from a, a large portion of our population that lives out in that area and, uh, Shannon, you know from where you live.
Yeah.
I don't know if this would pick you up or not, but it would seem to me that in citing of your equipment on the tower, you might want to consider-
Okay.
Because what you have is the population there that feels very, very underserved.
Right.
They're supposed to be served by the WOW project, the VTEL project.
Yeah.
And they are, do not appear from the evidence that I have to be, uh, that they're going to reach those census blocks out there. And those census blocks remain on the unserved part for broadband in the state.
Okay. You're gonna, I, I, where, where's the area?
It is the census blocks in the northwest corners of Pownell. Uh, they would be along Skippery Road.
Can you spell that for me, please?
S-K-I-P-P-E-R-E-E, or is it one P?
One P.
One P, I think.
Okay.
R-E-E.
Skippery Road.
You can certainly find out from Jim Porter at the department because he's been watching those census blocks for a long time and trying to get providers.
Okay, northwest? Northwest corner of the town?
Northwest corner of Pownell. You might also want to be looking as that they have not, they-
It's almost gonna go like that.
Occasionally put out grants and they're starting to put them out now in the VTEL area because the VTEL does not seem to be interested in sharing information of what's this houses they cover or do not cover. So they are now going to allow bidding, you know, for some of those dollars. And if your tower is cited to pick up that area of town, you might have an advantage there.
Okay.
I would look at that.
What you're looking at is where you've got some scatters covered.
Can you just circle it? I'll take your, I'll switch. Okay.
It's kind of like that they're in this hollow there.
The other places that are bad, as you can see, is down here at the bottom by Route Seven.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
And I don't know how you get there.
But this Skippery Road is in here?
Yes. Mount Anthony, Skippery is-
Fowler's Way, a couple little ones up there and-
Yeah. There's a bunch of them just over the mountain from where he is. So you don't, it's either junk over here or you're signaling us or it's-
Yeah, or they're kind of in the hollow there.
And who's the guy at the, the state? Jim?
Jim Porter.
Porter.
He is the deputy commissioner for all of telecommunications. You can tell him, uh, my name's Bill Botso, B-O-T-Z-O-W.
Who approves the appropriations for the department?
I mean, we're the ones who wrote the 248A, so.
Okay. Well, no, this is very good feedback. I mean, I, you know-
You wouldn't know unless you knew.
I, I wouldn't know even if they, I, I'm a, you know, they send me out to site after site.
And what you don't know, you don't-
Yeah, I'll report back, but this is, this is good to know.
You have at least three people sitting at this table who are in this-
Interested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So to speak. You know, I think both Mike and Sid and Shannon, you do not have cable. You, maybe some DSL for you.
DSL is up to us now. Yeah.
We don't even have transistor radio up there.
That I don't believe.
Well, I have AT&amp;T and I lose it right at the base. When I come down North Pownell Road with Mount Anthony comes out.
Yeah, and you're lost.
Gone. And I pick it back up when I go to my house.
Okay, let's, uh, continue on.
Okay.
There's a lot of scatters.
Was that it for the, I don't mean to, Bill, was that it for the, you said you had a couple of questions or was it comments, was that?
No, that's fine. The other thing I'd like you to do is AT&amp;T is pick up the dead spot down by the medical center across from the racetrack.
That's the other one that I-
No, that's, okay.
That's the one I showed down here in the south.
It's on Route Seven.
Yeah. Well, I can, yeah, that's, that's, uh, I, I will report back. I'm sure, I, I can tell you, looking at this plot right now, AT&amp;T is already aware of that issue. I guarantee you they're looking at that. I don't need to go back. I mean, I will, but looking at this plot, cause seven's the main travel corridor and they're gonna know that they're not getting, they're not throwing coverage down there.
Yeah, from the mass line.
But that is, you drive into the state of Vermont, you're on your phone. You come off of the Williams Towers and the first message in the state of Vermont is, your signal gets dropped. You come down the fire and you come up the hill and you start getting decent signal.
Yeah, Verizon's supposed to have a tower.
It's better than it was.
And that is now a brand-new medical center and-
Right, so that's critical.
-they really need it for their customers. And, you know, I've, I've, I've talked upstream, but I think every time this town sends the message that that is a critical priority for us. This is a newly-appointed body of the town. I'm just the state rep. You know, it's important to send that message.
Oh, they'll get the message from me, trust me. And there's no, there's no existing tower down there?
Tell Chuck Storrow-
There's towers.
I don't know.
There's towers now.
There's the lobbyists for AT&amp;T.
I don't know him.
Well, you may-
I'm, see, the guy I report, well, I'm a foot soldier. I tell people I'm a foot soldier in the telecom war.
Any doorway that gets us there, I'm happy for us to walk through.
Well, I'll tell you, and it was getting a little off-topic, but it's important for people to understand. And I should've said this. Uh, I represent Blue Sky. I'm here on Blue Sky, which is a tower company. I don't represent AT&amp;T, the carrier, although I'm sort of carrying their water for them as well. But the AT&amp;T of the world, AT&amp;T, Verizon, those guys are the carriers. They're the ones who look to see, to, how are we gonna build out our network? They're the ones who look to see, to how are we gonna build out our network? Then, once they figure that out, they go and they talk to the tower companies, and there are a lot of tower companies nowadays. Uh, and the tower companies vie really for the ability to, you know, build sites. I will also note, just for the record though, um, carriers will do what they call scrubs of areas. So an option, the last option that carrier wants to do is have to build a new tower, because it's expensive, it's time consuming, it can be very difficult if you're not in the right spot. Uh, but, um, the feedback that I'm gonna get, that I have, that I report to my guy, is to a person whose job is to build towers at a tower company. And when you talk to people, with all due respect, whether it filters down, I'm not, I mean, sure it does, but this is a different avenue and, and.
I would say the RF propagation map is entirely different.
Well, oh, yeah.
Your conversation's in mine.
Oh, I'm sure it is, but see, the guy I report to, the guy I'm gonna go back and report to on this, he's gonna be very, very interested.
That's good.
In this information, now how that pans out is out of my hands.
It happens to it then.
But, this is.
Now, it's just a matter of you're building the tower, if you put different.
Right.
Equipment on it, you might pick up, you know, good customers.
Yeah, oh, well, that's exactly right, that's, that's exactly right.
It doesn't have to be the company to wanna lease the space on the tower that they're building and know that there's a built-in client base for them.
Sure, absolutely.
And so rebuild it with that in mind.
Right.
But they have to know that these areas are deficient first.
Right, well, and that's what, right now, I guarantee you, AT&amp;T knows that this is a deficiency. I, I, I don't have to talk to anybody, no, I'm pointing that down here. Because it's where a main street goes in, there's, or main, main trial court. This area here though, where there's a lot of population, they may know that, they may not. But I, trust me, I do detailed memos and, and I will report.
I really appreciate your interest, Mike, just one more question.
Yeah, absolutely, Bill.
Will the lease amount that you're paying to the landowner change when you put in the new taller tower?
That I don't know, I didn't do the lease, my guess is.
Important question to the listers.
I'm sorry?
It's an important question to the listers because of how property tax works.
Assessors.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
His friend that came down and has already talked to the listers.
Okay.
Okay.
The David.
Oh, David Gray.
He was down and he was, he's on a, we pulled the permit, the original permit.
Yeah.
And he did speak to Barb and them on the project.
Yeah, but he, I'll be honest with you, he wouldn't know whether the lease rent is going up either, cause he and I work together and if I don't have the info, he doesn't. I don't do the leasing, I'm not being disingenuous. And I can also be honest with you and say, uh, I'm not gonna be authorized to give you that info.
Which is understandable.
But, uh, and then the other thing I handed out was the preliminary NEPA screening report. And this is, uh, as has been said, this is like the first five or six pages of a two inch thick document. And, uh, the document, the full document was in the packet, which again, hopefully you'll get. Uh, but, um, this is a, um, uh, preliminary National Environmental Policy Act. And if, the, the most important part of this is if you go to the very last page, it has, uh, the screening checklist, and that gives you the areas that the NEPA covers. And the NEPA is important because it's required by federal law. Um, until you get a clean NEPA, um, showing no adverse impacts, um, you can't, you can't have a federally licensed carrier go on your pole, they won't do it. So it's very important to get a clean NEPA. Um, and as you can see, uh, they've already done, um, a screening on the designated wilderness area, designated wildlife preserve, uh, flood plain, and surface features, wetlands and floodways. Uh, and they've concluded that there is no adverse impact. And when you get the full packet, you'll see how they go about that. Uh, they actually, it's, it, they do a whole slew of federal and state databases. Uh, but they also go out with boots on the ground, they send somebody out to the site, the, the full NEPA has photographs from the site and all that. Uh, and they, uh, look for wetlands and all that. Uh, I, I'm a little surprised they don't have the threatened or endangered species filled out as well. Uh, usually that gets done along with the other wilderness ones, but for some reason they're still working on it. Um, the tribal consultation has not yet been completed. If you look at the full NEPA and you go to the end, you'll see that they have sent out, uh, the notices to the tribe, the federally registered tribes, uh, and, um, because they're federally registered, and I'm not quite exactly sure how that works, but they're entitled notification every time one of these sites gets built so that they can be sure that we're not interfering with tribal burial grounds or other areas like that.
Like we only have state wrecking passes for one of our.
Okay, well, but we have to do the feds as well, and if, if you had five minutes, I tell you.
There is no federally recognized tribe in Vermont that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, but, I'll give you the reader's digest, we still have to check with all the federally licensed tribes. Well, that's exactly right.
Had burial ground here and then went to Wisconsin.
They charged for the review. And one of the tri, my favorite story on this is, uh, uh, we had, I was doing a site, this is several years ago in New Hampshire, and we didn't hear back from one tribe, and it was the Kewa, Kewaab Bay Indian Tribe. And I thought that this was up n- next to, close to Wunupisaki, so I said, well, they must be in Wunupisaki. So I Googled them, you know where the Kewaab Bay Tribe is? Michigan. You know what their fee is to review one of these proposals? A thousand bucks. You know how many sites go up every year and everybody send them, all in Michigan? But you can't say no, cause they might've walked through this area one time.
Everybody's gotta live.
That's right, but, 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 that's off my attention, I'm sorry.
Lucas Environmental facilitates all that, they're a consulting company that puts all of the environmental impact studies together on behalf of.
Yeah, the, the big one is, on this NEPA, the big one is the SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office. And we have to get a no adverse effect letter from the SHPO, or we have to, if we're, if there is gonna be some sort of impact, we have to mitigate it. Uh, that can be either easily done or not easily done. In this situation, because there's an existing tower, uh, my guess is we're gonna be able to get a clean NEPA. But who knows, we have to continue working on that. Which brings me to the la, my last item on my checklist, which is the balloon float, or the balloon test.
I saw that.
And, uh, you may be familiar with this, but I'll, since we're on, uh, on air. A, a balloon test is when a crew goes out there and floats a big red weather balloon at the proposed tower height, so this balloon will be floated at 146 or whatever it is. And then a crew goes around town and takes pictures wherever it's visible, and they produce a report, which we will submit along with the application, uh, and you will see copies of. One of the big, and, and we talked about, you know, what the town can still do, what the town can't do, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, one of the big reasons for this informational meeting, in my opinion, is to arrange for a balloon test, we publicly notice it. You, we'll, we're gonna pick, hopefully we can pick a date right now that works for the town, so that you are invited to attend the balloon test. You can go out and take pictures yourself, and, uh, tonight, you can tell me where you want the pictures taken from, and we will go take pictures from those areas and include them in the report, so if you're concerned.
Just for visual impact, right?
This is for visual impact, and it doesn't, and what they do is, they'll show you the before and after picture, so that the before picture will show where the balloon is visible, and then they superimpose a monopole, they Photoshop it basically, so you, the before picture shows you the balloon, the after picture shows you a representation of the town. And so, I've got my calendar here. Um, we can pick a date, uh, and I can then, um, if, if you have a newspaper, you can publish it, or I can arrange for publication, once we pick the date, we usually pick two dates, one is the good weather day, one's the bad weather day, in case we hit bad weather.
Back up.
So, um.
So would that be something the legislative body would, uh, wanna pick, or does it matter if the planning commission picks?
Fine, as long as the legislative body's notified, I think that's all we need.
Well, which they will be, you know, I mean, we'll write to all the, all the different bodies here and let them know. So, I don't know, Jim, what's your day off? Do you wanna be there, don't you? You don't, you don't, you don't care?
I care, but.
I know you care, just not that much.
I care about the mood in my soul.
Yeah, so, um, I sur, you have an interest in this, you're, you're gonna.
I, I've probably lived the closest there.
You're, you're gonna see the balloon from your house, so it doesn't matter, it could be any day.
Maybe, I mean, it's tricky, I was thinking about that, I mean, it's a good site for a tower because there aren't many places that you are gonna see it, it really is the highest spot. From, and then if you're anywhere else that you are, you're gonna be a little lower and it's gonna be hidden.
I, yeah, I, on Carpenter Hill Road.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't think you're gonna have a lot of visibility there because the trees, and the other thing is all the houses are oriented out.
Right.
And one in particular, uh, illustrates what I'm saying, is that beautiful farm that I wanna say is Peckham Farm. So red, coming down.
It's North Panel Road.
Not North Panel, but you come, you come down Carpenter and you take a left, right, and then you're on North Panel.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
Right, but they're all facing out, they're not facing back.
They're facing south.
Right, so.
Right, most people are, along that whole road are.
So I think.
On Skippery Road, they're all facing.
Right.
Down in the valley.
So I think the visual impact in the immediate area is not gonna be all that great.
And even though I'm up high, I can't see, I don't think, you know, I'm up high, but then there's trees going up to there, so I don't think I'm gonna be able to see it.
And some elevation behind you.
The only other thing I can think of is in the other direction with Sally Donaldson and those people, but I don't know if they can see that direction, because I see them from the cemetery down where I am, I just don't know if they can see.
You're looking in July or?
Well, the dates to me are.
Uh, well, I would look in, uh, I would say July, cause we need a little time to notice it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would, I would prefer during the week.
You've gotta pick a day when there's calm wind.
Yes, yes, well, what they usually do is they, they'll, they'll get the balloon up like about seven or eight o'clock in the morning, they try to do it in the morning, then keep it up through noon or one, because the winds are generally less at that point.
Yeah.
Um, but we, if, if you're looking at a weekend, the, the first weekend we could do would be July 30th.
Shouldn't it be a weekend when people are home so that they can, they're not at work during the.
They'll be down at the fair.
That's what I said.
On that weekend, that's right.
But at some point, yeah, and you said it'd be a more.
Well, we can look up from the fair and see if there's any visual.
You wanna say Saturday, Ju, July 30th?
If there is, we'll see if it's not fair.
Right.
Okay, so we'll say balloon test.
Start charging people to watch this, for the entertainment.
And then, um, for the bad weather day.
You want the following Saturday?
This is the moment I don't like it.
What's that?
You said a bad weather day, suppose in this July 30th.
No, no, no.
No, 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 I'm laughing, I, one day a year, fireworks.
Right.
Could we, could we?
August 6th.
Could we pick, yeah, could we, yeah, could we split the difference and maybe pick the bad weather day during the following week?
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the third?
What's that, a Wednesday?
That's a Wednesday?
Sure. People have to take that day out of work to see the balloon.
Well, as I said, it'll, it'll, I, I can ask them to have it in the air by like seven.
Okay.
Uh, let me, let me confirm that, but, um, now, if not, I'd say eight o'clock at the latest.
You warn this through the local media, through the newspapers, et cetera, do you do local postings, do we?
Uh, well, if you're Julie, by the way, I'm John Springer, thank, hi Julie, nice to meet you, we've exchanged emails. I can email you a notice, uh, which you can post on town, property.
Regular notice.
Put it on the webpage, and then, um, I can, if you want, I can, if you tell me the name of the newspaper.
Bill's, uh, list.
Can you forward it to?
Yeah.
Bennington Banner.
The Bennington Banner.
And your newsletter?
Bennington Banner, is that where?
One piece of paper that you can really write on, has lines on it and stuff.
He has legal pad, oh, you mean Julie, oh, I thought you were talking about John there.
I got it, I'm on top of it.
I know how to read my stuff.
He must have a legal pad.
She doesn't really stand script.
She wouldn't be able to find it if it were lying right down the page right there.
Yeah, Julie, really.
Hey, I'm saving paper.
She's saving money.
She's got her system.
Photo locations, uh, are there any you might want to, well, here's what we can do. Uh, you can either give me the list now, or you can have Julie email it to me in the next week.
So we could kick around a couple of photo locations.
Kick around a couple if you want.
I'm even trying to picture where you could, where you could.
The only thing is we can't go on private property, but we can go on the front of, I mean, if, if Shannon, if your house, you want us to.
Well, I, I could friends with Julie and Leila who are right, the, right next to Paul. And, or I could ask Paul and Julie and Leila, can you think of any place where somebody could see this?
Would you mind?
No, I'll do that, sure.
So maybe we can get.
I'm gonna see them on Friday.
We can shoot him three or four spots, and then if you guys wanna do a topography.
Yep.
Study yourself to figure out where to take them from.
They just drive around and see it, yeah, we can do that.
So should I then email?
Uh, well, Julie has my email.
Okay.
You can, uh, do you wanna go through Julie or you wanna?
Sure.
You can email me directly, I don't, it's okay, doesn't matter.
Okay, oh, is it on here?
It's on.
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll, I'll know on Friday.
Do you, sometimes when people email you, does it, does it go to Jerry Springer by mistake?
No, but, I can, uh, Jay Springer, JSpringerLaw.com. I used to have a, a parking notice that said Jay Springer, no, that was, my parking spot was parking spot for Jay Springer. And it always got ripped down, and because we're no, not far from UNH.
Yeah, yeah.
So drunken college kids coming out of the porcelain bars would rip it off, we changed it to Jonathan Springer, haven't lost the song.
No problem.
True story.
Very good, yeah.
Funny.
So, but am I gonna, is Shannon's list the only list I'm gonna get, or am I gonna get a second one from the board, or, cause I?
Well, I think we could talk about it.
I think we're gonna kick it around, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll think about it and enter before I talk to those guys.
Okay.
So you would need a, you would need that within a week or so, preferably?
Uh, I would need that, uh, well, we certainly have time, cause it's gonna be the 30th, so, um, but I would say certainly within two weeks, cause otherwise I'm gonna forget.
So in two weeks, we have our work committee meeting.
Oh, that's perfect, okay.
Kick it around then, all right, and we'll get you some info.
And that's it, that's all I have.
Nice presentation, uh, do we have any further questions for John? Guys all set?
Okay.
This is his card.
I hope so.
Well, hopefully it'll make for a better signal.
Yeah.
It's kinda, it's kinda one of the purposes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the goal.
I do.
I, I have AT&amp;T and I got three bars here.
Yeah.
This is my old one, so I have to change this one.
Yeah, that's, yeah, emails.
I've considered switching AT&amp;T, this could be the deal maker.
Yeah, right, especially if you can get over.
Yeah, which I'm fine at my house, but isn't, I can talk to you at your house.
Doesn't Paul and Carsh have one up in his place?
He is.
Mary Anderson.
Mary Anderson.
Yeah.
Yeah, be correct.
I, I realize, but Paul would get on that then.
That was in the chaos.
John, I'll take one of those too, if you don't mind. Although it's all over all your.
But you know what, I can, I don't care if it's a per round. Sweet numbers. Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and, um, I'll wait for the list.
Lot of good information, we appreciate it.
Okay, great.
Drive carefully.
I will do that.
On the way back, sometimes snows in Woodford this time of year, so.
Now I know, now I know you're lying to me.
Be careful, Searsburg gets a little treacherous.
Would you like to recycle these?
Keep, I don't need to keep them, one thing I do is still take. Okay.
It's a common attribute of the profession.
But, let's get back to our, um, our agenda here, and, um, let's take a minute or two to read the minutes of the May 17th, uh, regular meeting, uh, which I was absent, um, take a look through just for.
Bye-bye now.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I don't know what chapter 117, degree of discretion is, is that an actual chapter in Vermont law that you cited? Wouldn't it miss?[1771.84]
No, I say laissez faire.
Well, okay.
Okay.
I've just given my minutes to Julie, so let me.
Oh, here. I think you're trying to, there is a certain degree of discretion attached to chapter 117.
Well, no, I said, I think there is discretion in the enforcement.
Okay.
Of zoning bylaws.
Right. Wow, I didn't know that. I don't, I wasn't there, but I don't know what chapter 117 is.
I don't think so.
Instead of BSA.
No. You didn't say that. You said laissez faire.
I did say laissez.
And we identified. Okay. We should probably strike that portion and just say that there is a degree of.
Discretion in the enforcement of all laws.
Right. Of our, in this particular case of our bylaws.
Did you write, no, your district, where did you write the regulation?
The district goes after RR2.
RR2 district.
And the only thing I would ask is, when looking at this, the, we're just talking about the bylaws pertaining to noise?
Yeah, well, I've, I've added noise, dust, and other nuisances.
Okay, good. Because that was her primary complaint, right? Before the planning commission.
If I'm not mistaken, there was an ordinance about 24/7 noise, something occurring at all times versus the, the frequency of this. Not to diminish it, but it's not 24/7.
Public comment had already done? Meaning that's for Mrs. Gray or, or Robin and Gary Baker?
Yes.
Okay. But they, were they on the agenda that evening as guests?
Yes.
As opposed to any public comment, right? So a public comment should read none?
No, they weren't on their agenda.
They showed up as, they showed up as public. Yeah, okay.
Right. Because I had already worn.
I'd already worn, and had the agenda. Okay. I got it.
Already done what you put, did.
Under the CA monthly log that I assume you read for Nelson says review town for junk. That means review the bylaw?
Driving around town.
Driving around. Okay.
I, I had occasion to look at the bylaw definition of junked cars. And to think that some people are maintaining that they're, these scraps in the back of their yard are capable of being driven is absolutely laughable.
Well, I'll go over this later. I just don't understand some of the phone calls of what is allowed, what is allowed on checking?
That's why if you go to the bottom of it, that's why they asked to be explained in more detail and want Nelson to come.
I did, I think I made a motion that we won.
We did. But he's just saying he wants to know what all this was.
Yeah.
Well, I read off his report and because I don't know what the hell he does, so that's why he's here to explain.
Okay.
So I was just going by what was on his chicken scratch and that's why.
Don't hold back now.
I totally get it. And we want these to be as brief as possible, but we also want somebody, any member of the public to be able to come in. These have to be posted within five days and if they're reviewing it, they have to have a pretty good idea of what it means.
And then they can reference Nelson's report and then they have questions.
Does it get attached to the minutes?
They can call Nelson.
Should.
Okay.
Staple it on.
Do, do we see anything else that needs change or do I have a motion to approve these May 17th regular meeting minutes? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussion on these minutes? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain. Who chaired that night? Sid? All right, let's take a quick look at the work session minutes from a couple of weeks Is anybody able to make it to the steering committee of the Hoover River? Bill, you didn't go to that at the library, did you? For the, the Hoover River Steering Committee had a meeting Friday, the 10th at the library. BRC.
That's too bad. You could have brought a report back for us.
I know. We got to have Jason come in and.
I could say Jason.
Jason was supposed to have gone.
He did.
Did Jason, did he, did he report to the select board on it? So it'll be in your minutes, it'll be in your minutes, right?
If he reports on it.
If and when he reports. Okay.
I know he talked to me, but he hasn't reported it.
Julie, I didn't, I don't know if you wrote it or not, but I, I didn't sign any letter about Nelson being interim until his position is filled after.
I can do it, yeah.
So we got till July 1st to do that. Good. And we should probably talk about that tonight. Are the applications just flowing in?
Stack of them.
Like that?
For town manager or ZA?
ZA.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't, I don't, somebody will have to update me later on the town manager thing. I didn't go to that meeting either.
I couldn't get the department meeting, but I went and got a report from.
Your name was mentioned as town manager.
That's what happens when you don't go to the meeting.
I could say they recorded that.
I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 7th. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on the work session minutes? If none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I can't, I wasn't there. I abstained.
Sid abstains.
Thank you.
Okay. Need a signature on something, Julie?
Nope, make corrections.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Then I'll, I'll do it. Okay, the, Joel, can you take a look at the mail for us? We will get to Shannon and transportation. We'll just call it a other business or under the town plan.
Mail. We have VLCT alert on S230, their renewable energy citing, citing. BRC is annual dinner or their meeting Thursday, July 21st at 5:30 at Sunderland Town Hall.
Was this Senate Bill 231 that had to come back into session to override a veto?
It became 260. That is the energy citing bill. I think was probably important for the planning commissions. If the planning commission has a conforming energy plan in its town plan, then they can get significant deference before the public service board.
There we go, right there.
We have our energy system, our energy section done and vetted by Natalie.
But, but it hasn't gone to the public?
No, it hasn't been approved yet.
It's been our, it's our intent to, to change it.
And the pathway will be through the regional commission.
Right, okay.
And one of the reasons that we went back was to make sure that there was funding to the regional commissions to make sure towns had plans should they so choose to be able to advance, you know, their opinion on the energy citing and how to stand up.
So this is a big win for municipalities to get back in session and, and give us this ability for substantial deference. Because prior to that, even with party status, that was just kind of a rubber stamp, wasn't it?
We didn't have that strength with the biomass.
Yeah.
Didn't have that, you know.
We had a million voices though.
A lot of people.
Oh, yeah. You want to read it?
But I would say this is, that cell tower conversation we just had is that we did the same thing on cell towers so that the towns have, the public service board in this year, we got approved and had to give significant deference. And also we defined, you know, the terms in a way that is beneficial to towns. We also put in a piece about that they have to demonstrate if somebody wants to come in and co-location instead of building a new tower.
Okay.
So that all of these things are on the line.
Yeah, excellent.
Trying to conform.
Real progress. Much appreciated. Sorry, Julie.
That's the agenda from the BRC.
And I from the state of Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, the wastewater system and potable water supply permit was for Glenn Maitounis for the dairy. And I have the VLCT June.
Do you go to that? Any of you guys?
I've been to them before.
Yeah.
Yeah. We usually hold them on a Thursday night, which makes it hard.
Yeah.
Yeah. I went down on Thursday too.
Is it?
July 21st.
It might be this quarter.
Thank you.
21st might be this quarter.
Glenn diagonally across right here on the intersection of Senator and North Pono Glenn Maitounis. I don't, I don't know. But he got a, he got a permit for.
Do you want to now get without this?
No, I just did that.
Well, that's good.
Just taking care of our secretary. You have to read that and commit it to memory and there'll be a test for the next meeting.
I'll fill it anyway.
No, you want.
It's over with you, Warren Ryan.
No, it's helpful when you look through. Julie, by the way, regarding that, that was sent to us, I think by Richard Moore. Prior to his coming down here to talk to us, he also at the same time sent the, the village designation applications, et cetera, and the, the whole thing. And he was trying to tie all that together with municipal planning. So that, that is a January 1st updated 2016 guide to municipal, state, and regional planning. But certainly the areas that we're paying attention to are the municipal areas.
I should point out that in the VLCT news, there is a classified ad posted by the town of Underhill, which is seeking a zoning administrator. Did we do that?
No. I don't know. We're going to talk about it in a minute. Nelson might want to apply. You might. You can be ZA in two towns, can't you?
I did.
Be ZA for the state.
I don't think they used to talk Wednesday.
Why did you pay the price for one?
Is that, is, is that it?
Mail, yes.
Good.
Mail, yes.
Excellent.
I could stick with you.
Bill, there's a, there's a section here for additional public comment. If you care to, not that, you know, we hold you back at any given time, but. I know you're not going to do the log tonight. You want to just give us a brief update on some enforcement issues? You want to talk about that for a minute or two? What's going on?
When you're done, I want to ask you if you can do me a favor.
We need that on the, okay.
Yes, because it's part when he does his violet, no, not violet, his letters, his notice and warnings.
Okay.
When you do them, can you send the section? Because I had four people come in and ask what section 8.9.2 was.
I do that with a number of them. I'll talk offline on why I didn't do it with that one afterwards.
Okay.
Can I?
Only so, because they come in and.
I don't know that procedure. They expect you to know what 8.9.2 is, but you have your, your bylaw booklet here, right?
Yes, I do. I mean, I do, but.
And they can, and they know the Bennington County, the BRC webpage.
Has it there as well.
And it's right there. They can look it right up. So, so it's.
So it's public information, the, yeah.
Yes, it is. Basically, I've sent out a, a number of these to various people in town, and I reported this at the other one, out of the, I think it was eight we sent out. All of but two have complied. One of them has stopped and seen me and told me that he's basically claiming to move out of town. He should have it cleaned up by September. The other one, all I got, I got the letter back plus the certified mail back, so I've got to find another way to get in touch with him. He's, I sent it to, we sent our tax bill and both of them came back, but the tax bill doesn't, so I don't know.
Is it a?
He doesn't live here.
I was going to say, is it a Pono resident? No, right?
No, he owns property here and he has junk cars on the, on the lot. And that's why we're trying to get to him.
Careful now with that definition of junk.
Okay, all right.
A lot of things have value that some people don't see. A lot of machinery. I got a, I got an old wall driller in the backyard that surely isn't drilled. It's a 1932. Surely isn't junk. I'll, I'll, I'll.
I'm just saying that for Sid's benefit.
This landowner.
Let me read you the definition.
This landowner can debate that when he comes in.
That's right. Definition, junk motor vehicle means a discarded, dismantled, wrecked, or scrapped motor vehicle or parts thereof.
Not a well.
Or a vehicle that is not capable of being inspected or has remained unregistered for a period of 30 days. That's pretty specific. Junk, scrap or waste materials including old or scrap copper brass, iron steel, and other old scrap nonferrous material including but not limited to rope, rags, batteries, glass, rubber, debris, waste trash, appliances, construction debris or debris, or any discarded, dismantled, wrecked, scrapped motor vehicles or parts thereof. That doesn't necessarily include an old drill rig that isn't. If it's still usable, it's not junk.
Well, the same about it.
There are a lot of vehicles around this town that are, are, haven't been registered.
And the, and the one, one section of that that you read on is it basically must be seen from a public highway, not a private road. And it must also.
That's absolutely right.
And if it's behind a fence, you can't do anything about it. So if you're on a private road and you see this, guess what? We have no authority to do anything on a private road. And there's a lot of them on some private roads in town that I've seen that are pretty.
And if there's a fence up or it's covered, from a public road perspective, there's nothing we can do about it.
And basically, what I've done is I've gone around and sighted the ones that were on the public highways. were on the public highways, and in fact, I just sent another one to, two out, actually. One that, that up on, I always forget the name of the road, Offal Add Road, and basically one that's on 346 that, basically, he actually has plates on some of his cars, but not all of them. And I'm sure he'll give me the argument that Ronnie just gave, with that some things might be conceived by junk from the neighbors when it really hardly isn't. But I took pictures and sent it.
And that's fine, and every, everybody has a right to come in and identify why they think it is or it isn't.
That's right.
I don't, I don't really want to debate that bylaw tonight, but I'm all for debating it in the future. I want to get through the town plan and then go back and visit the bylaws. If at that time, anybody feels we need to redefine what junk is and how we enforce it or don't enforce it, happy to, that's what we're all about, right?
And, but basically, that's, that's where I've been spending time. I only had two permits last month, that's why I'm not doing a, didn't do a log report.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm going to do it with the one next time. And also, looking to report on what these other people are going to do and not do.
I think, Nelson, it's important that we get the report, we know what kind of activity there is and what you're doing, but I think we're more concerned with the enforcement end of it, and I appreciate you following up on those eight cases.
And I just sent two more out. Oh, and I'm sending an email to one up the highway that looks like he's trying to rent a piece of property that he shouldn't. And he has responded that he'll be in to get a permit, and I'm trying to think of how I'm going to handle this, because I think I'm going to end up having to send it to the DRB, because he's got more of a campground now than he does a trailer park, so. Just got to word it with him and deal with it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Nelson. Let's move on to the town plan work, and I want to talk specifically about the transportation section. And I'm looking, Shannon, for your email, and I can't, I can't find it.
I think this, I have, I think the one that's...
Because you listed concisely in that email what you changed.
It's actually pretty good.
Yeah, I think, I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, you know, we talked about it last time, and so I think everybody has the most kind of version in your package. And so if everyone agrees that, you know, we can...
So let's take a minute or two to review it. Would you just, that's what I was looking for, just highlight where are the areas we asked you to change?
Sure.
Or you have it, Julie's.
No, but I wanted to, she still, well, I only have a copy. What, in it, it's on the railroad. We have B and M.
Oh.
It's B and M.
Yeah, it's B and M.
Okay.
It's in your very first paragraph.
Other modes of transportation.
If we could just change it to Pan Am.
Pan Am?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, do we even want to list a name, or do we just say...
Say rail service?
Just freight, freight rail service.
That's about the third owner in the last...
Yeah, I know, that's my, my fear.
Yeah.
So some kind of reflection of...
Freight rail service.
Because, yeah, Amtrak currently isn't dipping through it, so.
Right. So what I was going to say, I didn't really change any of this introductory piece.
Right, okay. Nor did we think you had to, right?
It seemed pretty straightforward and good as is. The only other thing that we talked about changing and that I did alter a little bit under, the scenic roads destination, we just shortened the second paragraph.
Yep.
And we talked a little bit about including a map. I'm not sure exactly if there is a scenic road map that we could put in with it, but Nelson added the map, just, it's just the state map, yeah.
Of town road.
It shows all the town roads on it.
And I think that should be included. That, that was attached to that.
At the end of this section.
Right.
Now, I know I put that in, but one of the things you should be aware of is that the selectmen is talking about dropping roads, or change, I shouldn't say dropping them, change the status of the road from what it is today to something different, become a trail versus the other. We're going to actually look at some roads that might be classified as trails or others and add them to the roads, is what we're talking about. Anything else with the roads? That's the only thing we're really looking at.
Well, we're looking at changes, classifications of some of the roads from class three to class four, or vice versa.
Or trails or...
And they can, not, not necessarily close them, but...
Right.
I mean, painting them year round is ridiculous. Nobody uses them.
We sort of talked about that at the last meeting about, and that sort of falls under recreation, but it would be nice to have more knowledge of some of the trails that are already here, and that's already written under this town trails piece, the second paragraph. The select board should work on clearly defining existing trails within panel to be outlined on a town map before they are lost to the public use. And I, I think that makes sense.
So we want to, we do want to have a map, and we do want to identify our scenic roads.
Thing it should be specific, and I think that overlaps with what I gave Julie about the Route 7 and Route 346 corridors.
Right.
And we identified which stretches, I mean, it overlaps, it deals with restraining the growth, so it's not necessarily under scenic roads, but it really carries the same feeling.
Do you think that that needs to be addressed? I think that there's, that might be under here, under policies.
I don't know if it should be separate or just put in scenic roads. I don't know, because it really is speaking to the same thing.
Right.
I know. Go ahead, Nelson.
We should talk to the BCRC. A while back, the selectmen selected a number of roads for scenic roads, and they were working with the BCRC at that time. I don't know if they ever formally got put in.
To list them regionally as well.
But the BCRC might have something that talks about what our panel scenic roads are. I know we talked about Barrington Road at that time and 346 and part of 7, and I know we fed that information back and forth. I just don't know if there was anything that was official.
You know how long ago that roughly was? Many years, several, two, three?
Oh, no, I've seen the last five.
Panel scenic roads. So I can call Mike Thatcher, and I can ask him about if anything was done with the panel scenic road.
Yeah, Jim Henderson would probably know more than Mike.
Or Jim.
Yeah, because at that time, he might have been, it was one of those, either Jim or Henderson or the other.
And then I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
That would be great if there's something already done. But going back to...
It may be on their, on their website, too.
Right. I mean, if it's someone that's already done it, you know, or done part of it. But I do think, I mean, you know, I think we're, we're just looking at having enough flexibility within this, but also addressing some of, you know, those main issues. And it seems like the policies that we do talk about, this idea of including bicycle routes, you know, when, when possible, and new road construction, so that it is at least, at least there as, within suggestions. And then the only other thing that I did is I took out the program improvements that were there, which were either outdated road work that's already been done. And these are sort of vague, but I wasn't sure exactly how specific to get, and I just put, continue to work with the state on improvements to the Route 7 corridor, because it sounds like...
Exactly what we talked about, it was Nelson's suggestion.
Right. And then plan for maintenance of the main street bridge, because we know that is going to come up.
The one thing that the town is having difficulty with is we have considerable blacktop roads in our town, and we're fighting and trying to figure out ways to, to maintain them. If you go up and down North Panel Road, I'll use an example, or South Street, we're really starting to have our roads deteriorate, and we're getting less and less state money to, in the ways of grants, to help us with those. I'm not sure if our plan shouldn't somehow mention, you know, maintaining of our roads. I know it talks, you know, we maintain the dirt roads in a certain way. I don't know if we should, should somehow mention that maybe more resources should be put towards maintaining or fixing our roads up. Right now, if you look at the road budget, we're trying to hold steady. We don't want to raise a whole lot, but if people feel strongly that we should be doing more with our roads and the ways of quicker repair, it would be nice if the town...
It's kind of a reflection of the national malaise that no infrastructure is getting.
It's falling apart.
Right, it really is.
Because there's no federal money to save federal money.
We need FDR back.
Yeah, well, we need somebody to do it.
So the municipal planning guide, January 2016, under transportation section says your plan is required to include a map of prospective transportation and circulation facilities showing proposed highways and streets by type and character of improvement. So changing classifications is important. And where pertinent parking facilities, transit routes, terminals, bicycle paths, and trails, scenic roads, airports, railroads, and port facilities and other similar facilities or uses with indications of priority of need. So we do need a map. So hopefully, the regional commission has done this.
Yeah. Do you want me to, I was just going to say, is that something you want to follow up? Do you want me to follow up with BCRC and find out if they have something like that?
Perspective, is that what you're looking at?
No, I was going to ask if there is a statutory classification called scenic road, and does that have particular attributes? Not just, not just that it looks nice from the road, but that you can't dig down a stone wall, you can't cut trees along it, or you can't do things like that. In Massachusetts, a scenic road means you're prohibited from doing a lot of stuff off that road, including putting in a new driveway in some cases.
The words that the scenic roads designation sounds very official.
It does.
And I think you raised a good point. Is it, is it an official statement?
I'll try to look up, see if, see if Googling it.
If you would, that would be great.
I'll see if I can.
I know the state was...
Excuse me, check the BCRC website first, see if it's there. If, if it falls into, I might take somebody's copy back, or maybe I should just make copies of this for you.
Put mine back?
I, I just want to give her the transportation section.
I did write my name.
Actually, being the newest member, you, you should read this and memorize it. And then, and then explain it so even we can understand it, okay?
Wait.
What is it?
Wait, in our book, we have the town roads, state highway, trails.
Good.
We already have it in the document.
I think it's in compliance. It may have changed a little bit, and this also, Julie talks about prospective transportation and circulation facilities. So if, if these guys at the legislative body are cooking up, changing these things and they're imminent, we probably have to reflect that in the plan, or at least in a section, that the, that the, that the current maps in the back of the section here are subject to change.
I agree with you, so then I would say that the select board needs to know that we need that in a timely fashion to integrate it with the town plan.
Exactly. Okay, so just check with Regional Corp first, and let's see if they have anything. We know we have a map, and I would, that's probably the same map that the Regional Corp has, that Jim Henderson did his thing.
Jim did our maps, and there's our, right here, we have maps of the transportation plan already in our book.
So Shannon, you have the current town plan booklet?
No.
I...
No, not the maps, because...
She doesn't have the map.
No, I don't think so.
When we did that, we didn't have the maps, I guess.
Okay.
But there's our transportation one.
Does your transportation section reference the, I think it's the Ethan Allen scenic byway that is basically Route 7 that runs through town?
I, I don't believe that in our print section it's referenced, but...
Because I think that came in between when the last plan is and this one.
It would fall under scenic roads.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago.
Well, I think it's, it's called scenic highways or scenic byways.
Scenic byway.
Scenic highways. I think the importance of referencing it is because it opens the door to be able to leverage certain kinds of improvements if you town want it.
So it should be referenced here, transportation.
But we're talking about scenic byways. We could say, we could say that that one already has.
BCRC would know for sure, because they're the ones who put the program together.
They laid that thing out.
Whatever. It's just to make sure that it's referenced in our plan as well.
And I think it can be, it can be as simple as saying Route 7 running through panel from Massachusetts to Bennington.
It's been designated a scenic byway.
As a scenic byway.
This is identifying what's already there, so that you can build off of it.
Ethan Allen scenic byway, just say that.
Yeah, that's all it would do, is it's part of the inventory subsequent.
As it exists now, we have a separate section, 3.3.1.0, Route 7 and Route 346 corridors, which totally overlaps with what Shannon's doing with scenic byways. And when I edited it, we, we, we included three, we specified three different stretches, but it's all about keeping it the same, making it scenic, and as well, under general policies, landscape aesthetics and natural resources, encouraging recreational use for biking and hiking, and boating, and promoting bike lanes and all, and under traffic management. So there's, there's a lot of overlap here.
Yeah.
And it's a separate section, Route 7 and Route 346 corridors. Maybe we want it as a separate section, I don't know, to emphasize it. Maybe we don't.
Shouldn't it be under transportation?
One would think. It could be a section under transportation, but right now it's under, nothing.
Gobbling, it's all mines.
Right, but that's under what, the land use section 3.3? That's under land use.
You know, it's under...
Land use.
It's not. Well, yes, it's under land use, you're right. It's under land use, yes.
Seven of the bylaw.
It's, well, it's...
And it is pertinent to land use, and it is pertinent to transportation. So do we just accept a bit of overlap here and narrow down the transportation section and leave that alone? So what is the tie-in with land use for the Route 7 and Route 346 corridors?
It's not really under land use. Land use is 3.2.
Yeah, it's still not...
Okay, so we're...
It's 3.3.
Well, yeah, but it's, you know, this topography, this forest area...
Conservation and natural resources.
There's drains, there's all of that before it gets up to this corridor.
3.3 is all conservation and natural resources.
Yeah, that's what it is.
That is different than the transportation goal.
Okay.
She's not talking about conservation. We're talking about those corridors and not developing those corridors for conservation purposes in that section that you rewrote.
Right, it's scenic and natural resource values.
Correct.
Okay, so it has both.
She can state those, that some of our roads have that, but if you read on through this, I mean, using the transportation maps and data developed in, in that first step that I talked about, identify what future facilities and services are needed to realize the municipal vision, well, I think we're doing that in that, in the redo of that transportation. The select board has some input on this about what they would like to see done with roads and transportation in the town. If we're missing something, they're going to let us know. Two of them are here now, so if they have information, they tell us now. But even two months from now, three months from now, when they get this thing after our public hearings, you guys are going to have a chance to tear it apart, change it, send it back, whatever.
And at that point, we can add, add these...
Absolutely, absolutely. So if there's subsequent work done on that, then we can build it back in to that section. So I, I think for now, let's, let's leave that as part of conservation, let's leave the transportation section, and realize there's always going to be overlap because of roads in those two sections.
And then we'll see if we can, I do think that we need an updated map.
Correct.
You know, and that, that then...
Correct.
Ties these pieces together.
We should ask BRC to do that, BCRC to do that.
They do all of our maps. They have, we have to have the maps in there anyway. We've got to have all the maps in the town plan.
All right. So you're going to first check the BCRC website. If, if you don't find any, anything there, just let me know. I have to talk to them about several different things anyways, including this hazard mitigation and who's at River Steering Committee, et cetera. So I can, at the same time, check with Jim Henderson and say, we're updating the transportation section, we need an updated map for scenic highways, byways, et cetera.
Sure.
And see what he has. And he may say, use the one you have for now, and we get a new one, we'll send it to you.
But as far as language goes...
Yeah, I think you're on.
Does this seem like it...
Yeah, I think you're on.
Covers enough?
Ethan Allen.
Add the, okay.
Just add a...
Under scenic roads.
So we, so with the existing map, do we need an updated map to approve this section, or can I ask for a motion to approve this section with the changed language on the Ethan Allen byway?
And the rail.
And, and just changing from Boston and Maine to freight.
Freight.
If I can do that.
I think, I can move to recommend approval of transportation sections with the amendments that you outlined.
Second, I like it. Any further discussion on transportation? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nice job, Shannon. Bailed me out. Got to use that hernia operation excuse more often.
We did, we did adopt that, right?
Yeah, last time.
Yes.
I think it's in one of the minutes we just reviewed.
Yes.
And this was my two-minute effort this afternoon to come up with a report about the use of municipal planning grant.
Yeah, perfect.
I mean, it's a lot shorter than what Rosemary did.
Yeah.
See if Linda likes that.
That, that's all we need to report, and then they have to attach the four sections that were approved.
I happen to have made copies of them, but Linda, you have the four sections, right?
The other, the other part is, we need, if we ran into obstacles, we need to reflect that. If we involve the public, we need to.
We haven't done that.
We have to explain how we did that. And we really didn't on those four sections. We did several years ago with the, with the surveys and things like that. I would say that's three-year out-of-date stuff. So it is as clear and concise as that, Julie, I think, as to what we accomplished. Now, if they need dates as to when they were approved, although I think in Natalie's, the, the four clean sections she sent to you on, in May 14th, whenever it was, I think those are all dated as to when we approved them. If they're not, you just have to go back to your minutes and see when we, each one was approved. They were all.
You need that electronically tomorrow?
No.
They were all approved well before the 31st deadline.
I'm here tomorrow. I know it.
Is that the deadline of the grant closeout date? It has June 30th here.
End of the month.
They, yeah. And there's, there's some leeway there that Nelson pointed out to us. So we're, we're still swinging away.
So Nelson needs that information before he can get going.
Well, I can give her another copy of this.
What they do is they submit the report. Once the report's in, the woman will contact me, and I'll send the request to the funds. What, what will happen is, take a quick look at this. Yeah, I would just add Rosemary, because they want it from the beginning, from the start to now.
We, we have one from the beginning, done by Rosemary last year.
Yeah, I know. And what I'm saying is, when they do this report, they need to do what Rosemary sent plus this.
Wasn't that part of the original grant application?
Right.
They need it again?
Yes. What it's saying, if they read the thing that was sent, I just had it in my hands, they're looking for start to finish. Because what they're looking for really is is everything that you've done for work on this grant.
Well, then, this was sent to me by Linda. I don't know if she has this electronically or whether that's.
No, she has that. Linda has that.
I sent that to them, so they have.
The thing we sent you was the only specific sections that we had to do.
Well, and that's what I did.
Right.
But there's no reason not to take the heading off of this and add this on the end. Sure, Rosemary submitted.
That's right. Yeah. Here's what it says, project summary. This is what you got to file.
But this has to go in its own section of the.
Briefly describe the progress of your project from start to finish, including unexpected opportunities or obstacles.
So then I say, we take what Rosemary submitted initially, tack this onto it, and that will describe it from start to finish.
And don't, don't forget to add that you've had some obstacles. Yeah, like I said the word, my phone won't let me today, that you've had some problems, which were basically, you know, due to whatever reasons, you, you didn't finish this project that you said you were going to finish. And the reason is, is because you, it's proved to be more than what you thought it was, for one thing, and you're doing a multitude of sections. And you should state that, but we will complete this project with our own funds, or however you want to say it.
Oh, may I interrupt? This was for, those four sections that you have in front of you, and we did complete it in the timeline. The entire project not pertinent to the grant will be completed.
And that's all we need.
The grant doesn't really, it's not pertinent to closing out the grant. But those four sections are, and there you have it.
You're right. We, we changed, we changed the, the level of the grant that we would, because initially, and the level of the grant says we were going to do what was state-required. And that's these sections, right?
Those four sections were required. The consultant worked with us on those four sections with the goal in mind of getting those done before May 31st, and we did it. So there are no obstacles.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking of the original.
Yeah. No, no, no. We've, we've got some work to do on the rest of it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That's the next grant, Nelson.
Well, let's get this one.
Is this me or you?
Let's get this one done and in.
Okay. I don't know where we are now. Where's my?
This is yours.
Yeah, hands off. Okay. Any other town plan? Jim, did you do, did you put yours back into a draft form?
No.
You want some help with that? You want to form a committee?
We got, yeah.
Yeah, I was getting a committee.
Bill, I'm sorry.
And two bands.
Do we have other things tonight to talk about regarding the town plan?
Not, I don't think you have to talk about them much, but just to inform you about.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a good time then.
Okay. The, a year or so ago, the legislature established, because Southern Vermont was interested in the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone. And that Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone is a group of people from both Wyndham County and Bennington County meet and put together preliminary report and with a number of suggestions. One of the suggestions that they had in it, that was brought up when they had a, a final meeting the other day, had to do with combining plans on cult, arts and culture across the region. And one of the recommendations was, is that each town should work towards having an arts and culture section in their town plan. And the thought that came out of that, perhaps a model could be supplied for towns to use when that was appropriate. I wanted to know, let you know that that was possibly either coming or something interesting. And where it resonates with Pono is obviously with the thought of the track being a, an entertainment venue, plus obviously, there are any number of individuals who have potteries, or home studios, or, plus the history of the town with the Art Students League and the library.
May I interrupt? So an actual section, not part of the recreation section, for instance? An actual arts and crafts and entertainment and culture section?
Probably a short paragraph.
If you have anything on that, would you send it to us? I can't guarantee that that will make it into this town plan.
No, I know. I know that at any point, if the group chooses, that you can add on to your town plan. You don't have to wait. Well, the new legislation is going to be in years. We will not have to. However, I just.
But that's not law yet, either, is it? The eight years is not law.
No, that was signed.
July.
I, I was on the VSA on the statutes today. It still says five years, we are required to do an update of our town plan.
It's in July. It's in your packet.
Yeah, it's in the packet. It becomes effective July 1.
Becomes effective July 1, which is the fiscal year, right?
Law that was signed a couple of weeks ago, when we go in as of July 1st, we will move it to eight.
Yes.
Okay. I know it's been kicked around. I've heard eight years, 10 years.
It's in our, in our.
And they wanted 10.
No, no, I get that. I'm, I'm looking for the 12 things that we absolutely need to have. This would be based on a regional study. And being part of that regional group, we should consider putting this in our town plan.
Absolutely. It's not a requirement. The thought is, is that this is one of the ways to build economic development.
Right.
The southern counties.
You open the door and the vision, right?
I think it's a good idea.
And set the region up for applying for federal economic development grants.
If there's any wording on it, if there are any best practices on it, and you have anything, or if the BCRC has anything, I would welcome any of that.
That's good to know. I'll try to let, there's a fellow.
Now's the time. One more little section is going to kill us. Is it, Shannon?
No.
I could, I'll, I'll help write it. I'm, I'm new. I haven't had it.
Just thinking about the Nats, the museum, you know?
Well, and the thing that comes to my mind is that, well, and that's why the museum, I thought was, I think that's a pie in the sky thing. But there is this, like, museum corridor, you know, from North Adams to Williamstown and Pono. I think that there's a lot of potential to draw people.
Right up to Bennington.
Yeah, exactly. And to draw people from that area to Pono.
You know, you got Clark Art Museum, use the corridor, somehow time together.
Yeah, a bike path.
Massmoka.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So what?
Theater, you got a whole bunch of stuff.
Who attended that meeting?
Right across the road, you know?
Who, what, when, when there's a regional meeting between Wyndham County, is that a, the two, the Bennington and Wyndham Regional County Commissions, put that meeting together?
No, it was the legislature asked that a Southern Economic Development Zone Committee be established.
And it was.
The governor appointed the chair, it was Wayne Greenquist.
Okay.
And the speaker appointed two people. One was Marla Cole Silver, and the other was Michael Kane. And the Pro Tem appointed a couple of people. And then it was also a designee, or the director of the regional commission, the industrial corporations for the two sides. That group came together and established very large general pieces around workforce, around whatever. And where they ended up with is they said that the most beneficial move that could happen was that Bennington County had got up to the level of Wyndham County in getting a comprehensive economic development strategy.
Excellent. Okay. Now I got it.
And the legis, and we funded that this year, got 50 to go to the BCRC, bring the two up so they can go and apply for federal money for economic development initiatives across the two counties.
So our connection in this will be the BCRC.
Yeah, ultimately.
Ultimately.
Ultimately. But if, if you want to be dragged along, you can just wait. If you want to be proactive, and even sort of a leader, you can say, like, hey, we have something on it, then flesh it out.
Yeah, I think we do. I don't think we want to be dragged along, because it could go beyond our approval of a town plan. And then we don't have a section in there, and we haven't painted the.
Well, that's not a requirement.
It's not. No, I understand. But it doesn't, but it's important to us for anything that we think we need to paint a picture for, to have it in there now. And whether it's required by the state or not, we certainly know the 12 areas that are required. That's not wrong.
Actually, aren't there more than 12? Because flood resilience is labeled with section 15.
No, I know. Men hours. But here's the state 12.
We had 15, but they said we are only required to have 12.
We do need flood resilience. It's one of that.
It is, it is. It's one of the 12.
Economic development is one of the required sections now.
In your, in your book.
You could say this is a subset, whatever. I'd just say it's a short paragraph. But why don't I do this?
Yeah.
Is that this also dovetails with now, there is a Vermont Creative Network, that the Arts Council is statewide is hearing. And there's a fellow named Steve Settler up in Weston, who's for Southern Vermont.
Okay.
Been designated with it. And I was speaking to him about this. Why don't I write him an email and say that I mentioned it at your committee, and that your town is interested in, you know, if it can be done.
Yeah.
Because you're.
We're in the midst.
In the more planning right now, is to get a foot in the door. And what can you offer that would give them a sort of a boilerplate template?
I was going to say, suggest it be the Reader's Digest version.
Right. Yeah. Tell them, tell them we're in overload mode right now. So make it, make it so simple, even we can understand it. That's, I'll tell you.
Just wanted to show you that.
Thank you, Bill.
That's the effective date of the new statute.
Oh, okay.
Extended to eight years. Plans adopted after.
After 2015. Yeah, so we're, we're still under the gun.
We're going to be, we're going to be.
I only have one thing.
Excellent. Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
For, I want to do interviews at our work session.
Thanks. Hang on one second. Hey, guys, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just, Julie has a statement.
On the zoning position, I did post it. And here, the village market, Mr. Winchester's. Then I emailed the banner several times to run the ad and the banner. I only did it twice because five days to run the ad was $643.
Wow.
Two days was $518. So I had only ran it twice. And then on June 9th, I posted it at the website, and then it went to the VLCT newsletter, which we get. Then it was in the Vermont News Guide that everybody gets in the mail. And that was in the week of the 14th. And that was $116 for that ad.
Are we legally obligated to put it in the banner, though?
Yes, that's our paper of choice.
That's a record.
Our record of choice.
So we are legally obligated. We have to pay that freight, right?
Yes, my dear.
But you didn't, you did it twice.
I only did it twice, not five days.
Okay. But that, that fulfills the requirement, Julie, correct?
Yes. So I would like to do the interview at our work session.
At the next, the, the January.
Yes, because our deadline for the applications is July 1st. And the only one we have so far is Nelson.
Okay.
So and I figured that we could do the interviews.
And he can't make it that night, so he's out.
Trust me, we have our three-day charter. It's okay.
I get it.
We'll get the gist of what you want.
Okay. That's fine with me. Is that fine with everybody else?
Sure. Next meeting is when?
We'll, we'll bring the bright lights. We'll put Nelson right there in the corner.
July 5th is our next meeting.
Where were you the night of?
It's the work session.
That's your work session, right, July 5th?
Yes.
Right.
And when did you say you wanted this interview?
I have a feeling I'm gone.
That day. So I'll do that as a special.
I'll be on a cruise.
You will be on a cruise?
I will. I don't think I will.
Oh, oh, oh.
I was in March, but I don't think I will be that day.
That's all I have.
Okay. Is there any other business before us this evening? Bill, thank you for all of your insight and help. Much appreciated.
Good to see you all.
Yeah, good to see you again. If there is no further business, a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay. I don't think we need any further discussion on an adjournment. So, thank you all.